Definitely.
All the meeting to order the Monday, August fourteenth, committee of full administration and operations. The second item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes? Any changes? Changes are in any instance to approve the agenda as presenting, move a council work second by deputy mayor Dilliball on favor. Good disclosure, junior interest conflict of interest and the general nature thereof. Does anyone have a junior interest conflict of interest?
Mister Mayor, the paperwork has been filled. It is a.
And review the PR.
Yeah.
So we'll step away then.
I will.
Okay.
Paperwork's been filed.
Alright, so then moving on, business arising from previous committee meeting minutes, if there is any, does anyone have any business or? Okay, so then we are on delegations and presentations and I will say welcome to Mayor Grant Burle. podium is yours, sir. Uh, we usually, or sorry, we usually keep it to uh, ten minutes of questions if possible, okay?
And so that was something that was not very common back in that time. On uh, the uh, the community certainly did develop a strong pride around the department. And and I know that uh, that we as community leaders probably have a slightly different view of our region. I think we do appreciate what it took to get things to where they are now because we are now presently part of that group that is continuing to advance things for the next generations. But but it still is worth saying that our region exists today because of the hard efforts of the people who are now seniors in our community. And those same seniors now are turning to us and looking for help. There's no question that we need more long-term care beds in the region. We have the race tsunami that's moving through our society. Uh, and in addition to new beds, there are a number of existing beds that need upgrading as well. Uh, you already know about maybe a lot of projects that's underway. Uh, so that would be a great addition to the community. It always involves an expansion, uh, not as large as there, but certainly adding some to our facility as well as upgrades that we have in our existing beds, so. Uh, we did have, I want to get this right out of the open, it's the elephant in the room. We did have a number of years facing some serious financial challenges. So we did have that right up to December thirty month twenty nineteen. And that's simply not sustainable. We were forced to seek some municipal help from time to time when we had a major group prepared or just simply couldn't afford ourselves. But I'm very proud to say, and it's unfortunate that our our chair, uh, Candy Brandon is not here to join me today. He had some crap about the last thing that he had to take care of. But uh, I credit him with with the real turnaround. He was the one who said from an accounting standpoint, look, you need to hire an expert in the deal and come in on the newer operation and help us understand all that we need to do. Because if we just keep doing the same thing, we're just going down the tubes. And so he really understood the language that the consultants spoke from a fiscal standpoint. And based upon the information that both consultants provided to the image of the board, I was only just uh, being entertaining a mona at that time. Uh, the four major things that took place were the right side of the overall sad infrastructure of the organization. To put effective controls in place for purchasing and use supply. Uh, to develop more efficient and timely monitoring operations by compelling the meat on a monthly basis to the board. And the insight that we have into the operation is compared, not quite down to a pencil level. But you know, we know when there's a problem coming six months before it's even a size that I would consider to be a problem. So that's a big improvement back. And probably the biggest thing was we shifted the way that we measure our operations to align correctly with the four provincial funding levels. So unless you manage something the same way that you're getting the revenues, you're never going to be making strategic decisions properly. So you know, those those four things were key in in us turning it around. The one thing I have to stress here is the the change in perspective in right side, right side in the sad structure. Those changes did not affect the quality of care prepared provided for residents. So we continue to get positive feedback from residents and their families. They have a very, very high level of satisfaction with the care that they're receiving. So I'm very, very proud to say if I didn't take credit for this alongside the can, alongside our our uh, financial group on staff to keep us on the on straight and narrow. For the last three executive years, the sugar park in our operation has generated small surpluses in each of those three years. So one year is an accident, three year is a trend, there's no way we're going back to the deficits. Even through the bill, we've been able to do our final hundred projections and we're still in in positive cash flow situation. So I really have to stress at no time other than when we had our handout from the North Coast. At no time have we ever received municipal subsidies. Never have we received an operating subsidy. The only contributions we ever received were for emergency cabbage. So so I challenge others to ask themselves, why sure we can do it, why can't we? And the fact of the matter is, the private sector isn't. And so we're modeled after the private sector before profit sector. We're just not generally profits. Those need to go back into the expansion and so on. We do have roughly a hundred thousand dollars worth of assistance from an endowment fund and regular contributions that we get to uh, from families. But when you compare that hundred thousand to the overall size of the budget, uh, it's it's a little more than around here. It's not, it's the difference. We appreciate it if I'm looking wrong, but it does not make the difference to our sustainability. And so to put that that surplus situation in in proper perspective, we had accumulated a six hundred fifty thousand dollar operating deficit. And that got paid off over the three years. So we don't have any operating deficits anymore. We just have properly structured amortization and and the end of a little bit of longer debt on our facility. So we're in in decent shape as far as that's concerned. We've heard it from our residents time and time again, they rely on change for the better when they transition into our community. Too many times, either because of being on waiting list or just waiting too long, even on their waiting list. A lot of the people that end up in in office hours or some of the other facilities really don't wait too long together. And and so they just they find such a welcoming environment because of our staff, they find former neighbors, they they make friends, you know, they're they're happy in in that environment. Certainly from an economic development standpoint, the sugar park manager has a certain pulse of weight. We contribute a hundred and thirty still jobs to the to the region. And that will only increase a little bit as we expand our operations with the redevelopment project. And we've always provided compassionate and attentive care. However, in the last few years, especially because of COVID, it's highlighted the need for improvement in our facility. Quite frankly, if we're not able to move ahead with the redevelopment project, uh, seventy-five of our beds will reach the sunset point of their license. And there's no way that we can sustain ourselves just literally in operation. So this is quite literally a do or die situation. This is not for an enhanced uh, level of care to the residents or what have you. This is if we don't raise the money that we need to do this, we're going to be a few bricks short of the old and building the life of it. It's just that simple. The new facility will definitely meet and exceed all our building standards and using distinct ventilation systems, essentially it will be pandemic. So we'll have isolated uh, ventilation, quite unlike uh, what many of the facilities are are using today. That will of course allow our families and the sugar park volunteers to enter the sort of safety, the visitor of our loved ones, even in the event of something like another COVID situation. We did a recent market study because beyond the redevelopment project, we have a long-term vision to become a campus of care. So so we hope one day, first things first, we understand our immediate project has to again finish. But in the long term, we envision having, you know, seniors of parks and then modeling system of living and just have somebody be able to move onto the campus. And then make that their their sort of permanent home at at the end of their life over ten, twenty, ten five years, whatever it may be, and just gradually move from one level of character to another. So that's sort of our very, very long-term vision. But at this point, I'm excited to share with you some pictures. These are our offerings uh, in the early stages of our new facility. That would be the ground floor that's in black. Uh, on the right hand side of the slide here is sort of our existing facility and a little bit of a of a transition structure. And the walkway into the main entrance of our our new facility. And if we flip onto the next slide here, we'll see sort of a a different view of um, residents sitting in the room. Uh, that without a person once having been brought in, but plenty of room, spaces, uh, all the uh, all the ability to uh, the house necessary. In terms of the redevelopment project itself, uh, there's a little bit of uh, of uh, anomaly here in terms of the map round here accumulating. They generate a million dollars missing somewhere, but it doesn't really be that at that point. So overall, the project is projected to be forty-one million dollars. The uh, province will underwrite the mortgage to the tune of twenty-five million. We've been working very successfully with the oil bank up to this point to uh, to beat a mortgage forward for for that. Uh, we need five million dollars for community support from from the broad community. I'll bring that down a little bit further in the morning. Uh, one of the key things, one of the reasons we're actually able to move ahead is that some of you may have heard the province announced some fast track funding. So they were not, they're not happy with the rate that we should be developing products for going. And they also recognize that construction costs have been impacted considerably over the last couple of years. So they then they carried out to the secretary and they said, for anybody who's at a dangerous stage and has reasonable returns, they can get a double in the ground by the end of August. Here's this fast track fund. And we did the calculations and realized that was the difference when we had to go after that fund. There were some very specific and very tight targets and timelines that we had to meet. And I'm proud to say to this day, we went every deadline that is involved in that program. The province has not made a single deadline in terms of when they were supposed to get back to us. Uh, and and that's understanding, they actually got more uptake than they were really anticipating. But to put that into perspective, our our first submission would have involved uh, some preliminary problems. We should have got feedback from the province, ready to have a more detailed level of drawing to them for the second. Well, in the absence of their feedback, we did what we could with a more detailed drawings. And just a few weeks after we made our second submission by the deadline, didn't we get any comments back from our first submission? And it cost us no extra thousand dollars to get our second submission complete and give it back to them. So. But but we're committed not to give them the excuse that we ever missed a deadline. We don't mind if they miss theirs, but they will never come back to us and make the excuse, no, you missed this one, you're not getting the money. Just we're not going there. We also have some surplus land that we can, if you can mortgage, we'll have to approve it. Uh, but we can leverage that at equity to help make up the difference uh, and actually bring this product to to reality. Realistic perspective that this will and can happen and it's not going to put us in a hole we can't get out of. Move on. It was the the last few slides here. Before we actually started on the campaign, we knew that the market study was definitely a demand. Then we wanted to know, is it feasible to to even undertake this given the the community funders uh, component that's required? And the feasibility study that we did was a little bit different. Consultants didn't go out and ask for the money. What they did was they went out and asked for people's uh, impression of of the facility and what they'd be willing, what businesses they'd be willing, those types of things. So we just wanted to to get sort of a a temperature of the room before actually going out and asking people, you know, for the money. And we were just, we were blown away by the stats. We got the front view. Ninety percent of the respondents indicated uh, that our reputation was excellent or good. We were, you know, we were glad about that. Uh, nearly two thirds of the interview, we believe the the community would respond positively. Nobody actually said that the communities would not. Okay, the remaining third is simply unsure. Alright, so so that was very difficult to do it well. Uh, nearly a third of the businesses and over half the individuals indicated that they would love it. And and we are already starting to uh, to see some uh, some of the work coming from business community. Uh, not quite, not really making any announcements yet, but um, things are going fairly well on track for what we're able to do at this stage. So just uh, going to work, so to finish my here, a couple of points about the way that we see ourselves in the community. We do consider ourselves to be an angry institution for the provides uh, for its seniors. Uh, we also see ourselves as a non-institutive importer, if you can think about it. Uh, we certainly contribute to the community uh, through those employees. Uh, and and even even down to the local municipal benefit, the people that live in your community and earn their wage in our facility are able to come back and spend the dollars in in the community. So I won't go over all of the goals that are included in the package, but I'm only going to highlight them because it really sort of touched on ours. It's the second one. So thank you so much to everyone who lovingly care for my credit, my during the same sort of way. Thank you to the residents for their friendship, our wise man Candy Richard, as they share their stories of their life, that wonderful loving people. They all have witnessed the true good cares for others on vacuuming out the streets. That just reinforces what we said earlier, here over and over, it can move in their lives when we need. So we're getting close to the point where I actually hit you with it all. And but I want to tell you the uh, I'll take a little bit of credit here for for my position on on the board. I really throw home the need to to give consideration to the ability to pay. So we didn't want to just do something overly simplistic. We did do some analysis with the best information we had available to us in terms of the most recent FIRs. Uh, some of the the county information from their budget was helpful in terms of setting values and prostitution and that type of thing. So the general approach for our municipal contribution, we already asked the counties for essentially two dollars per capita over over five years, so about seven hundred and twenty-five thousand. And that needs a the the lower tier level. At roughly a dollar per capita or less. Uh, and also no more than point one five percent of the of the levy based on the best information we had. And no, no more than point double oh four percent of total setup. So there will be some municipalities that are fairly close or at that dollar. Others are down around, I think, ninety-two cents per per capita. Uh, so the reason for that disparity is just that whole sensitivity to ability to pay. So there we go. That brings us to the slot. So for Edward the bird guarding, our request that you consider contributing thirty-five thousand towards the capital campaign. And we put down a couple of scenarios here. Typically, we have been suggesting over five years to make the cash flow easy. We understand that some counties are not really comfortable committing beyond their own term, unless it's, you know, playing the project or something like that. So there are the the way that the two scenarios work out the way that we see it. And we certainly hope that we give it due consideration. I think it's a worthwhile investment, especially given that this is the one I asked for the gather. We're not coming back for our, never have, no, we don't, don't need. That brings me to the end. I'm happy that you're gaining in question, because you have them. I know who they are.
Not close. Um, but here to leave here on me. Um, uh, thank you, Mayor Row for bringing for uh, for your presentation. I I have to say, um, watching uh, other long-term caregivers struggle. Um, with cost overruns and and uh, operational deficits. The fact that you managed to uh, the committee is managing to keep with Mister Durant's help, obviously, but uh, to keep it sustainable. And and actually, you know, last couple of years with a small surplus, uh, being able to pay off that that operational debt, that's. That's fantastic. It certainly sets an example for uh, for others to follow. And I hope that others take on the same strategy or likewise strategy. Uh, when it comes to how they run those homes and how they work with the finances that are provided by the province, since you're doing a great job of it. So. Yeah, with those few words, I uh, I will open the floor for discussion. I'll start with uh, with this end and work with whatever. So are there any questions for?
I don't have too many questions. I have a comment, but I'm glad to see that uh, you changed your strategy. Like you're actually getting the follow-up, but then I'm always many of your dice is on council, which is part of the scene to be a constant. I won't say the order, I'll say councils, but you seem to be constantly asked and questioned about whether you're going to survive, what if you're going to end up. The doors shut on it. I have that relative. Very excellent care that we've got, got driven. It's been a struggle for a lot of councils already to figure out what's going to happen. It's not a factor, the county council, the last couple of terms. Where they're going to have to absorb that in the beginning, but try to look after our residents. It seems that you've got an excellent board in place there now that has uh. Put the bullet and figured out a way of doing it. And I think it's, I'd like to see folks, you have to put forward this way, that they break, break it down rather than coming out from. The same way we take the council and donate a hundred thousand towards the number one. The reason why that number, I like the number where you're planning on the capital basis today. The capital attack of the different municipalities, how we want to access it. We've got seven thousand residents. There's a percentage that will might end up there, but if you get twenty thousand residents, you have more up to be going there, so you should maybe donate a little more. Do it. So I like process. I don't. I think, in my opinion, for what we're being asked to do, donate to the counties and their project and what we're being asked to donate here. As I said at the last time, I think this dollar or two dollar per resident is pretty little, little last room. And I think maybe we should be, council should actually be thinking of donating more. I think that actually, I think it gives an excellent job and. I like to finish congratulations, but it seems you've come from a very dark place with the extension.
The the mood of the door games is very much different now that us here to go out and tell that. And and I'm going to take twenty seconds and just zero in on the implications if we don't do this. It will use expansion from sixty to one hundred ninety-two is a net gain of one thirty-two in that facility. If this were not to move ahead, that's a net loss of one hundred and seven in the region. Then then it makes the main project completely different, like in terms of value for money for the entire region. So so yeah, we have invested interest in this goal, but we need new demo science.
Well, I almost hope to, I I have commented a bit about that as well. And and you know, I mean, with with you, with regards to comparing to the Maples, you know, uh, and and if you will selfishly say, I guess, for our township. You know, I I think we have a much better likelihood of people buying SPM than we do the Maples from our perspective. They're, you know, the exact opposite end of that means uh, from that. So so and I do also want to skip one from uh, from Mister Hunter is is the. The idea of a per capita basis is is great. I like that approach too, you know, and and I must confess, I'm going to, we're going to have a discussion later. I'm a little concerned about, you know. More and more of us coming out of the woodwork of more requests coming out. It's a way to figure out that and that obviously, that's because, you know, we've had two in the last two months and it could be more coming down, but we know, you know, there's more over there. Uh, but you know, my, I guess my hopefully, I don't know if you can answer it, but as far as that forty-one million dollar total goes. Um, you know, I'm I'm hoping that, you know, I know that there was cost overruns, uh, just whatever happened with the Maples. That basically doubled its cost. I was concerned about, right? So I'm hoping that that's not the case here, but uh, so I'm assuming you have a nice fresh one, we're here this morning.
This is actually the most updated and updating, updating number that we have available. Uh, if I was presenting in a couple of weeks from now, you know, that might be to, I don't know, maybe. Uh, but I can tell you that when we started doing the floor plan, they gave us the choice of you have to go to either one of these two experts. Uh, who have a tremendous background in in costing more projects like this. And and it just, it moved at the pace of inflationist that we would have this for a few months a little bit more. And every time we move from one class of estimate to another, or then you're refreshed or what have you, the needle moved exactly as much as we expected it would. Based on the conditions that existed at the time. So I really don't think that we're going to see, see any surprises here.
So so that's good, that to me, because that's where I was kind of creating. My question is, knowing, knowing where we're happening with the Maples. You know, I'm assuming that you guys are are expecting that if the forty-one million creeps a few billion higher, you've got contingents for that in place as well.
Yeah, to a certain extent, as much as we can. That's why I said that the the unraising campaign needs to be at least five million. So we needed at least one point five of that from municipal sector. If we can get one point eight from municipal sector, we can get, you know, three point nine from the community. I guess so with more of the agreement for sure, but we're comfortable enough, otherwise we wouldn't be here. You know, we we don't want people to depend on getting profit. We want to depend on it.
And then by the incident, I keep swinging, I do it all the time. I keep saying Maples and I've had people's do, but I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Worship, for your presentation. We've had discussions, as you know, and you know how I feel about coming and asking. I know it's big. I know we have to. Um, I just have, you're saying you're looking for one point eight. So is there thirty-five thousand? And with the other nine municipalities, you're going to put, move it up to one point eight.
Include the counties in there, but.
That includes the county too.
Yeah, okay. So you can ask that the county. So we've already received a half million dollar pledge from Rockville. Right. Um, I'm not asking you anything that that my council hasn't already done. Took a little bit of the services that I get there, but so we're in front of it. And so it's going to work out to between what my residents pay at the county level and will be best to do with the lower level. Lend up being four dollars a head and and everywhere else around, you know, server there's only essence for three dollars taken in in total. Right. Uh, so totally that, I said.
Now, are we going from a hundred and seven beds to a hundred and twenty-eight beds? That's your, your goal is is the plus twenty-one, doing the seventy-five over plus, adding another twenty-one? And I I I mean, I I just can't. I just love the senior apartments, starting off, you know, retired and then you step in the next few months, maybe you're like into here. We all know, I mean, listen, so I love that getting, getting your steps. Um, I hope I'm like uh, Mister Ward and and the mayor. I mean, those numbers, I I just friends like Maple, Maple, you know. Maple view, landing or launch or, I'm not even sure, but I mean, you know, just keep that going. And I'm glad it's only for cap, not operation. Is that right?
Capital. Yep. You know, one, one time ask for capital, nothing to do with operations. And and it's up to you, you know, we really can, we can make good use of the funding, but it's stretched out for one in five years. But if you want to provide us with five thousand dollars, I hope much like, you know, if I walk out of here, that's really, it doesn't have to be, you know, either the scenario.
No, no, great.
What you're looking for, you have to be on this, we will not know.
Well, job well done. Uh, take that back to your board, Mister Durant. Thank God. I mean, I just don't understand. You know, how many years they ran as a deficit and now they're making money and you know, not great, but they they're not. So I mean, for for especially operations, great job. So I'm with you. I just, you have my support.
I appreciate that and that will take all of that back to one instant.
Twenty-nine ideas, great presentation and I I knew my fellow councilman, Deputy Mayor. Uh, I just have a couple of questions. The population, did anybody, when you bring these presentations through, would it be better if we knew how many people in the group counting more than sixty-five?
Oh, just as a as a general statistic of the population.
Uh, I'm in that category, brother.
I can get that, or you don't, no, I just, I just. Not from, not from the group part, we would do some of it, and you want to contract that, but we can certainly with that.
Well, I don't, I really don't need it, but I'm just saying like when you come up with a presentation like that, like all people might get, well, it's that kind of people in the county. Okay. Cause I really love the presentation and uh, I work for Fear Home and I've been to the. The uh, manner and I've never seen. The manor and I've never seen any run so respectful in my life. When I bringing a person out and everybody who works are applying something. Like it just, it's cheer, I mean, you can get patience. And I've been to everyone in the area, so. They really are impressive. To do a good generation, so it's time for us, so.
Good, thanks, Councilor Smith. Councilor Martell?
Great presentation, great merit. I have no questions. Very, thank you.
Karen. Um, she's gone with the fantastic presentation of the facility, looks wonderful. Um, my only question, what's the sort of expected length of the project to take? When when would they be expecting to?
I believe. They are looking at. I think I did this wrong, but I think they're looking at eighteen to maximum for us.
Okay.
So, you know, yeah, we are not gonna have an excess up in the ground by the end of August, but but that's, that's not honest. We can't, we can't sign a big word at the bank until we get a certain date from the ministry. We can't get that paper from the ministry until we get. A different paper from the bank, so we're in that area around the way.
Right.
Uh, and as soon as the ministry happens up, I suspect it could be over. When we'll start plans and we've been doing some very ordinary things, but we're gonna go waiting buses.
That's awesome. That's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, just a couple of of comments for me. I've never heard the term grace tsunami before, so. And that, uh, I I appreciate that, and I may more. Um, uh, I like councillor Hunter, I know you and I have talked in the past. I certainly think that a dollar per head is is probably the the minimum that we could do, I think. Uh, when we have this discussion as an actual discussion item, not not as a presentation, that that we may come out with. Hopefully something slightly ahead of that. Um. While you're here, um, interestingly, further on in our agenda.
You're gonna be put on the news, aren't you?
We, uh, we we do, and it relates back to this, I mean.
True.
Uh, if if anyone followed along and in the media, you know, you had. Some discussions in your council and creatively you came up with something that I've asked for for to be included. Um, so it's kind of like a string. Um, uh, attached to to later to later on, and I think the example that you're setting. With Sherwood Park Manor and its financial sustainability and. And not working beyond its means, not having champagne tastes on your budgets. Um, um, sets a really good example for MBL. And and I, um, like what you or council did with that. So while I have you for two seconds. Um, do you have, can you say something about that?
Yeah, uh, so one thing that I want to make clear, and this is both from from my counsel standpoint. And from the true of our first stand, so I can have it for the ballgame and say this with the bearing. It was never, it wasn't intentional and it is intentional. The the two projects against each other, that's not the narrative that the recent needs, that's not what I see this need, and that's not what it's all about. But I guess what what changed with my council was that, um. There was always, I'm not gonna say anything stupid, there was always a reason to believe that it couldn't be done. And and as I said in my presentation, one year maybe, next two, three misses a grand. So the first year that the true operated by who have that. Grand that goes with the tax in many of these months, but but now we're at a point where even if I'm in depression, so that. That type of operation, like to even through the building. So so now that there's a compare, now you have a textbook example of totally candy. My counsel shared much of the same concerns that I've heard here tonight. Once again, right, and and the promise should be the after this, but I don't say. If you ask her, previous boards always thought, well, promise you'd see this money, that's why they're involved. And and Ken and you are an actual guy approved, no, that's not, we was more good, right? It can be. And so we didn't want to help, right, say no to to maybe. But but my counsel didn't have an appetite to contribute more than the taxpayers were already reaching deep into their costs. So they said, look, there's an example of. Go to audit them, learn some things, come up with a five-year plan. They didn't want to be unreasonable and say, okay, next year we gotta end the the previous thing. Come up with a five-year plan until it's manageable and working within what's possible, because now we know it can be done, there isn't. And when we see that effort. Then we're gonna talk about it. So so that's where we actually established.
Twenty minutes worth of. Yeah, I'm sure, no, it's fantastic. That's my as though, um, and my only other question to that is, did you put it on?
Uh, no, not other than than to develop a five-year plan, I guess, or something younger part would have been, oh, I did seven. Start for twenty twenty-four, right? So again, I love to think that our council reasonable to a response from back from town, you'd say. Okay, we're going to do that, but we're gonna start that plan next year. We probably say, okay. But no, it was all for the good of time. I guess we could all be put on your list.
Awesome. Uh, again, thank you and to Ken and to the rest of the board, uh, first on behalf of all taxpayers. Um, for, you know, managing, getting. Uh, Sherwood Park in shape, um, you know, it's commendable work, uh. You know, that that the board has done to get it there. So so thank you for that. Thank you for the presentation tonight. Obviously, there's no. Decision made tonight, but it'll it'll come back at 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 a discussion. Uh, later, I know the clerk has heard. Know what she needs to hear from from the members around the table and they'll come back with their application, so.
Awesome, thank you very much for the opportunity and and don't get involved, I'm happy to pronounce them and spend a little time with the. Our our district leaders, uh, but meeting my own, I have to get back to. Very few days, so.
Awesome, good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Alright, so moving on to number, uh, number six, which is consent agenda. So it's listed under consent agenda, consider routine and no longer require further discussion. When our enacted and unwelcome, the exception to this rule is that, uh, a member. May request that one or more of the items be pulled for discussion and voted on separately. So before we move forward, does anyone have? Uh, a consent agenda item that they would like removed? One. So, so A, B, C, D, A, B, C. Good?
Yeah.
Okay, so then the recommendation is that following consent agenda, I don't experience it as presented, so. Um, A would be the second quarter operations report, B is the second quarter fire report. Uh, C is the twenty twenty-three MTO interim report. And, uh, D is the rail safety week proclamation, so ask for mover. Need a mover for that consent, we'll vote, move by councillor Martell, seconded by deputy mayor Dillaball for the discussion, almost discussion. Uh, nobody wants to pull anything? Okay, then, all in favor? Good, so then we're moving on to discussion item. Which is, uh, Mapleview Landings Funding, so, um. It was a good segue from. Mayor Berro, and I couldn't let him away with. Without asking him that question, because if everyone's read their package. Sorry, I'm trying to find my spot on the back of the game. Um. What their council did is is good, and it basically is an asking for, there's a, uh, for background. As much as we were asked and we all supported, um, of the. Ask when Mayor was here, uh, with Leslie Todd, the for the fundraising committee, we generally supported. Um, the ask that that they had for making the lodge. Uh, I thought that Elizabeth Town Kitley's council, um, originally they said no. Um, then they came back to them for reconsideration and they put some strings on. Uh, on it, and they're asking them basically to come up with. Um, a sustainable. Uh, operation that that, you know, won't run at, uh, that's the three. Three point two? Three point two, two, five, one. The range is from five point nine to three point two, I think, for the the two operational depths. So this is asking them to. To review it, to come back, uh, and and to do better, so, um. I I asked for this to be included, just to make sure that everybody was aware of that, um. And see how, and see how the discussion went, if if there was anybody that wanted to support this resolution. And and to defer, potentially defer our, um. Our donation to make a new lodge until hearing, uh, from United Counties and what they had to say back, so. Having said that, there is a written recommendation, um, and it is still a discussion, so. Wants to go first? Anyone?
I'll touch you on that. Are you on seven eight? Just want to make sure, the Mapleview Landing Funding?
Yeah.
And we we do have a recommendation in front of us too, right? Is that part of that?
Yeah, we.
We shared ours in July, we took it here again for reference to the, um.
Okay. Okay.
The the motion that was brought forward from, uh, play the law is not actually that the council.
Right. So the recommendation, may I address council that approved? Is not?
Can we share that as a two?
Yeah.
Good.
I can, I can still come to council as written.
Right.
Uh, next month, we can fully support it as is, um.
Or add in to the resolution.
Yeah, or we can defer, we can defer that donation and we could support Elizabeth Town.
Yeah.
These resolution, wait until. Until we see.
Until they.
What, and then the canvas comes back with.
Yeah.
Um, we'll see if that puts a bit of pressure on them to find a, uh, a more. Financially sustainable way of then going back to, uh, the province and the taxpayer for more operational. Boss, no, I'm not a capitalist.
We're the province.
Uh, councillor Smith? And?
I guess. I got a ponder over.
Okay. Councilor Martell?
I think we should defer to the council.
And support. Support the Kitley, Elizabeth Town Kitley Resolution.
Yes.
Karen?
Yeah, I'm I'm. I'm ready for that as well. A lot of fun.
Yeah, so it's a nicely, where I was gonna go, I I would like to, and I would like to say that I'm, but what they did, Elizabeth Town Kitley. I support that notion as well, but I also think that it also gives us time during our budget season as well to figure out. You know, because like I said, there will be more of us, you have to keep an eye on that aspect of it as well. So I think we should find a way to just budget carefully, know there's a number of dollars per person township. That we would, that we would use to support things like this annually and 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 do that, um, going forward. Uh, as well as, uh, you know, uh, to, uh, to what was said, uh, from, uh, from the brand. But, uh, but, you know, I don't want to have this be something that also pushes into, uh, into into the next council. I think we should be. This is, so, they're likely to. And and support the Elizabeth Town Kitley. Uh, councillor?
Uh, I think I expressed a lot of my opinion on the project last time, but. You know, thank you very much. I'm aware it's gonna be in time, but I definitely think. Councilship certainly. Think of the review and the decision. So we have paid for that. And they definitely need. You know. Maybe you need to. Really clean up for that on this project, because I think. Thinking forward to the final disaster, you know, I've seen it. Really.
Yeah.
Had to show to be any time or found confidence, been out of confidence. Family way of control and personal.
Yeah, this resolution is the first, um, attempt, and it's not, I don't think it's gonna fix the capital. I think the capital's what the capital is, but. But this, this resolution prevents the operational side of it from from becoming the capital side, but is I. Uh, I I think it's.
I have actually. Maybe think twice with some of the fact that anyone makes you council first, I think, but.
Pull back on full order. Yeah. And I I meant to ask, uh, Mayor Vero, if if anyone else has, uh, had supported the resolution, I I completely forgot, uh, forgot to do that, but. Um, I get the sense that there are lots of others that have the appetite to, uh, to take a good solid second look at, at supporting our version, so. Thank you for for your comment. So, great, so to the clerk. Um. It's on for. Okay, so it's included for part of the discussion. We already, uh, committee, we already. Put it. To go to council, so. How do we proceed?
Good, we shared that pass motion was a very active request. Uh, it would be a reasonable, so if you're directly in staff to prepare the motion, that's the firm payment supporting. Elizabeth Town Kitley, then for the people who. Okay.
So do we need, do we need procedurally, do we need to defer? Like, do we need to prepare a motion? To defer that decision?
We will share with the, so. To, uh, not be bothered, and that way, uh. Come back, you know, it's my, my, my.
Okay, and and so I'm getting the sense, uh, I think I've heard the support for the Elizabeth Town Kitley motion here as well. So do I assume? That someone makes a motion to support the Elizabeth Town Kitley motion as it's written?
We can share that would be best. And then prepare a form.
And as part of that, who would we be? Would we send that to the other third, the other twelve municipalities that plus, um, plus United Counties? Okay, alright, so can you walk me through how to do this then? So. So the first thing that I need is somebody to move for a deferral.
Correct, defer the, the usual to another vote of course.
Okay.
Um, and you can defer to that time or to.
Okay, so can it be that, um, we receive further information from United Counties, uh. In regard to the Elizabeth Town Kitley motion? Kind of be, I mean, that's not very good wording, but.
I'm sure I. It's a little bit of the. The, uh, motion writing.
Okay, so before, before we put that on, then this, um. Um, I have, yeah, at least I have the feeling that that's the general consensus around the table. Like, almost everybody simply supported and feel this town killing. Uh, motion, if I'm not mistaken. Um, is everybody, is anybody gonna comment on that? Before we go any further? And defer. Okay, so then, um. So then, do you want to read it back, Rebecca, and then we'll ask for a mover, a secondaire?
I'm sure, and do not.
Okay, so everybody's pretty. Um, everybody understands exactly what we, so we're we're deferring the the. Previous committee decision to support the funding for MBL. Until we receive. Uh, feedback from United Counties in regard to the Elizabeth Town Kitley motion.
Resolution number one nine three dash five two.
Thank you, yes. Okay, so everybody understands that, what we're doing? Excellent, I need somebody to move that. Moved by councillor Ward, seconded by councillor Smith for the discussion. Here, none, all in favor? Good, okay, now I need somebody to move a motion forward. That supports the Elizabeth Town Kitley motion. And. Uh, further that it be sent to all the municipalities of. The Ingrahamville, Rudy Lakes, Thousand Islands, plus the three separates, so Scott, game. At Rockville. Uh, showing support for the Elizabeth Town Kitley. So, uh, I need a mover for that, then. Moved by councillor Martell, seconded by councillor Smith, further discussion. Here, none, then, all in favor? So, hold on. Okay, so number eight, that's all of everything. Okay, we're good. Okay, so moving on, action items. The first four are under consent agenda, we are on to the DQMS, uh, third party audit. And Mr. Lemon, I believe, you're gonna present that to us?
Yeah, for the chair, uh, communication accreditation, our authority that urban municipality wireless program. Township is required to complete its pretty year, pretty aging cycle. The NSF. Company is our third party auditor for this council. On June third, second, two thousand and three, and the cell performed an onsite accreditation audit. Year one and year two were off. Year one and year two were offsite audits consisting of not proposed to the unit all, all conference call. And year three was non-located. Our following mention system is fifty, twenty-one elephants, still applying to any old proofing model consisting of plan, due check, and improved. In summary, or functioning effectively, no areas of non-performance noted. Six companies for improvement were noted for consideration by the auditor. One of those are recommendations to improve the even events of all non-partments required. These items will be released uh, and then. And a stuff which you actually already did.
Awesome, thanks, Eric. Um, questions in regard to the DWQMS audit?
Well, sure, uh, you know, uh, Liz, and not to be little of this, but you know, you know, you guys, uh. You make it look easy, to be honest. It's, it's good to see that because I know it's a lot of work to keep the system, it isn't as uh. Uh, with such integrity as it is, and obviously I'd be able to throw out of like this uh, without. Seeing any, any big questions raised or anything, it's just, it's just so, uh, the work you're doing. So, so just one of the same things and good ones.
Good, thanks for those. Thanks for those words, council work. Um. Council, or sorry, I did this finally. I've been doing so good. Mr. Hunter, anything?
I have anything to say, I'm congratulating, it's just uh. Full of years. I've been involved with this, just seems to be a. Uh, constant playbook. Come to fame, but every time. Never any failure, no. Like any other inspection, they always. Have a suggestion company can do better. If they didn't, that's one, one happen, I didn't get some suspicion, they always. They gotta come, I think justify their job being there, so. I think it's just, I think everybody. Did a wonderful job over the years and. Shows the integrity and qualification for the people.
Well said. Uh, I mean.
Just, yeah, I just wanna. See what the board, Mr. Board and I'm gonna say, I mean, um. Our interior drinking water quality management is such an important part of our, our council for sure. And Eric, thank you. And thank your staff for going over your audit because as we all know, it's never ever, ever want to get into. Like Washington for sure, so. Thank you, well done. And uh, continue.
Uh, that end of the table?
Well, I think Eric has done a marvelous job, like. This is all agreed to me when I look at it, but I know you know your stuff. You're doing a really good job, so. Appreciate.
Go.
Probably were not.
Well, I'm, I'm the same as, as well, and it is fantastic, uh, I think. Mr. Hunter said, said it really worked really well with uh, the, you know, over the years, it's just like. You've done such a fantastic system and, and greater, you know, there, uh. Uh, I don't think I've ever submitted in the years that I've been here. Uh, kids. They're always gonna find those opportunities for. So keep up, people, it's great. Okay. Um, so can you roll over your stuff, how like? Uh, just please don't. The deputy mayor has uh, clerk on like doing this step. Um. So treasure or water or. So, so can we run through the construction here?
For just to give you the background that the August meeting of uh, developing only. Uh, requested uh, for paranoid day on the night road to code that. And also regards to uh. Traffic control and impacts to the emergency feature route or D R. Uh, so for the kind of two updates, uh. Just over. There are several complaints of the traffic on the town roads. On the project for. Got me in the world when it's cardinal. The doctor uh, uh, to our goshen. And uh, the overuse in K Bro. As uh, transport doctors using K Bro is for all. Uh, revenue that uh. Operation. Local traffic in the area is silent along K Hill. And then on Monday, August seventh, there was an accident in one of your Johnstown. Plus a component of others, the guy was delivering naturally, see the road road. Not to revenue. Another issue that, that identified, apologize, station or expediter equipment. Uh, too close to the intersection of uh, Shannon Town Road two. Uh, contract states that equipment must be part of five years from uh, road intersections to reduce the possibility of line slots. Uh, that was not a case with the uh, intersection of Shannon Road and Town Road two. Director of Operations, so for fuel and down on a site that you know, to say on a page to relevant issue. There'll now be a site inspection that we're grabbing on community by fuel site inspector before the crew's break for the weekend. It should drive the sidelines are maintained. Uh, an update that's on the court as of today, the uh, excavator was still parked there. Um. So Director of Operations has reached out to water both that. The only time that it can leave uh, their excavating equipments in that location is if they're covering up in the hole. So uh, Director of Operations has reached out, confirmed that it's blocked, that excavators parked there. Uh, and uh, we'll explain for, for taking some on that. Um, as far as the E R group update. Uh, currently from Shannon Road, uh. All the, all, all the uh, E R signs are covered. Uh, you've got construction on County Road two. Uh, so that's second camp use, uh, as we are about to close down four oh one. Uh, the county in MTO will allow, develop new temporary E yards that we traffic north. Uh, to County Road twenty-one and eighteen, rather than so County Road two for the duration of the County Road two program. Uh, signage has also been installed, indications changes. And uh, structure in those two traffic, so is noted on uh, municipal five one one Ontario. So it consulted, it should divert at traffic. In the event of uh, a shutdown of four oh one or the word sixteen. Uh, just a, a matter of note that E yards are really meant for emergency situations. So that is a way of setting them for one of the first scenes closed. Traffic, that is in what time E yards come into the back. Uh, so it's not just a matter of trying to remember our instructions. Uh, if there wasn't a emergency situation where they had hurdles roads and. Could ask for. Get to the Director of Operations, so to clarify if I'm misquoted, um, on uh, if we did need, uh, say. Or needs to do the health data track or monitor intersection, and then do that, but only in case. Not in case of.
Good, thank you. Thank you for that update. Um, comments, questions, anyone?
I don't have it on the media. The detour, but. Uh, through the chair to move uh, Director Operations, it's a safety issue. At the corner of number two highway. Coming off Dundas with the traffic sign people because they're in behind other signs. And I was sitting there, they almost witnessed an accident because the guy, first guy who went on the highway. Heading north was going to turn towards Prescott, but he couldn't see the lady, because she was in behind the signs. And this guy started to move, when he took off, she still had the stop sign. And he was going by this guy over here, so if they could be a little more physically. That's just my point of view, sitting there watching, so. So that mission education, I asked them to rearrange their bodies, certainly, everybody can see. Save that.
And then, no.
No, I mean, to, to, to counsel, so it's a difficult intersection right there. Uh, it's, it's, you know, it's a struggle because it's kind of going, almost seems like in three different directions in some ways there. Five directions, pardon me. Uh, so, you know, it would be nice. You know, and, you know, I get, I get the, the, it's really big detour around that area. Up to twenty-one daily, it's mainly that essentially back in the pond, I can see how. I think a lot of, a lot of people are gonna try and avoid doing that for sure, even if it means going around, it was local signs on, and so. You know, I mean, if that happens again, it'd be, it's, it's a sport there. To help, but uh, make sure that they, they follow the proper area.
Good, so I, uh, I think, uh, I'll jump in just for one quick second. First to the board and then. Team and also the trainer Sean. And Dave's absence, thank you for um, your quick response to. Uh, those complaints and those concerns as they were addressed. Um, it's unfortunate that you had to respond on, on a Friday night. Or a Monday of, of holiday weekend. Um, but thank you to all the staff and anyone that went out and, you know, and did, and did that job. My question into the lead up to that is, why did we have to? Are we the lead on that? Like. When it becomes the situation, it's not an E R, I, I get it that way, that it's not an E R. Uh, cause it wasn't. A detour route, I suppose, at that point, but it was realistically. Um. Is that the normal procedure? It's United Counties road. It's a United Counties detour, it's using counties roads, but we're responsible.
Through the chair, this is making, uh. The, the E R change was set up by the MTO, which is. And force it's team and by the counties who own the main roads. The problem being is, I guess, a bit of a gray area because yes, they're very much. So, uh, I guess the response at the time was the proper response in this situation. Uh, I went out as soon as I received a call from the back in C O. Uh, went out both areas and there was no traffic. By the time I got there, nonetheless, still went ahead and. There's some key kinds, it seemed that Thursdays actually tend to be worse than Fridays. Um, just was brought up by Gavin, what the site means that they can put it on downfalls when. Somebody objected was, they noticed typically that on Thursdays and Saturdays, which was the original. Incident, accident weekend. They could have any time, but I guess the actual E R, there wasn't a lot of input from us. Necessarily on the E R duty because it is a county vote and it is the MTO speaker. The thing that's uh, uh. As, as I can see, I would say. Emergency routes are meant for emergency. That neither, well, I'm not sure that the accident wasn't an emergency or the closure, I, I didn't see that. Um, had they, then maybe that's appropriate, but in the case of somebody was using an E D R route because it's convenient. You get around traffic, that's not, that's not good.
So if we, um, you know, we have two more holidays, so, so accidents aside, our volume. Our volume time would probably be. Will be sort of Labor Day and possibly Thanksgiving, I think. Uh, things will be wrapped up, but things are suspended by Thanksgiving, so. Um. From a volume standpoint, what would our response be then next time? We just. Do we do this time or what, what would we do in, in advance so that, so that we don't end up with the complaints that we?
I think we could do something similar with the, with the local traffic, only on a couple of roads. Um. Problem of that is people with their heavy interest, you know, then we're just for the next row. And uh, you know, with, with heavy trucks and stuff, our, this four roads are that for, at that traffic. We have signal less far, uh, most of the county roads double less to accommodate every year, so forth, so. This problematic, and that's also why, um, it's worked out between the MTO and the, or, and we. To get along with towns, you know. So that the, the roots travel out, out and out and both, they say to the county roads where it's, where it's heavy. More designed, more designed for that. Uh, as far as that, hopefully, uh, some of this, uh, will be mitigated despite the fact that they'll get some of that four oh one pay. And it will take it out of the air and, and, and hopefully, uh, we can look at being prepared in terms of putting up the local traffic. Only again on those, up those roads, but again, could just move to the next road.
Would, would we consider? Doing it the same way that we would if it was E D R? Cause if it was E D R, you would look minute for a spill in the extent as well.
Um, depending where the, the traffic, really is the problem, um. In, in this case, they went, went down pain and. In Johnstown, or sorry, down Cedar Row, uh. Because of where the objective was, I think, the traffic, when I got down to, uh, on the. Original one on Thursday, traffic was passed harder on the four oh one back, probably a cloud or. Uh, by the time I got back and railing everything like that, and it moved. A cloud or past part of the east, so, so it did pick up, and it was kind of just a, a sudden burst of. This backing up and people were getting off and, and. So depending where, where the pitch is, it would depend on where the problem attention, you know, that, that would. Dedicated like where you are in four one. Project.
Yes, we wouldn't. Yeah, right. Yeah, I, I think the idea is that we just don't want the traffic to go to rest or bits to go there either, right?
There is a couple hazards, but before you know that, I can verify. Because then people heading this direction could come this way and then in the other lane, you get around barriers. Something that we thought so, did not. Uh, produce a, a hazard situation trying to benefit another or another.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm just, so, so in the instance of volume, we take lead in instance of an accident, somebody else makes late, we still.
In the volume, the E Rs, they shouldn't be coming in our.
They're not.
Our roads are municipal by what, what's Mark is the construction. They even want municipal by the one, anybody can, and they'll show you all of the stuck areas by this town. That's what we have, it's all over. The MTO and the counties control the yard. So, so we don't have that. Uh, and then chances are they're going to the MTO side of the being on transports and stuff like, yes.
I think everybody's going to Google. Google Maps. Might as long be the shortest distance possible.
Absolutely. And that's, that's part of downfalls, because Google doesn't say there's some struggling.
But if you put up a barricade or you put a, a local road. Only, and somebody reports that to Google, then it, it goes red as well, right?
Yeah, it, it. The thing is, they get by when they're not, they're on their way, I believe, in place. I don't know that, uh. The necessity these obstacles are, are brought up in a. So format by the people that are getting around it just in the hurry at all.
Well, well, sort of, I mean, that's a good point. Can we not, if we, if we were to, if those barricades, not reported to Google, as well, make sure that's.
Soon we can, I've never done it before, but. The other thing is that, make sure we have the, the proper equipment to put out the local signs. Not sure we have any of the blinking lights left, uh, function that should be set up for night time. So somebody did come flying down the road and we have reflective cones up and everything, but nonetheless, there's a liability, uh, we get there.
So it's such a huge highway two project that's going on for a long time and. And quite honestly, uh, I think we've. Uh, made it through most of the summer relatively unscathed and Kavanaugh's doing a fantastic job, I think, uh, with, with the work that, that they're doing. And they're, you know, proceeding at a very, very good pace, uh, to get us over this quickly, but it. Uh, that August first weekend showed us if there is something that goes on, we are gonna have mess and. I just want to make sure my full faith in everybody, but it just seemed a little off that way, I guess.
Just did, uh, follow up on that. Also, we don't want to be contacted, you know, to go, and you'll be. If they get there, there's something happening, but that could be calling both and pulling the noise from someone else as well, so. Um, it, it mentioned about a site that better, and it had cleared out. Uh, and I think when I went through the Shannon Road on the first one, I saw four driving back up. To the, through over the current lower basket, check the highway. And I saw four cars on Shannon and probably ten minutes.
So did, so did.
Yes, I settled. And then traffic had. Had it east of the overpass at twenty-two though.
Yeah, and you were actually, I think you were actually stuck in the one heading westbound, right? Yeah. Yeah. Okay, no, I just wanted for discussion, just to make sure, because I think, you know, we need to be prepared for. Um, you know, for that, we're certainly gonna get some heat on Labor Day weekend for sure, if. That people are driving the highway too at a, at a crazy speed like they were last time, or they're using K Road, so I think, you know, we're gonna. We're gonna hear about it, and when we hear about it. We're gonna hear about it, and when we hear about it. You're gonna hear about it. Yeah, I want to make sure that it's the same.
We try to do the best we can under circumstances, but I guess it's a, it's a big project, especially first of all, in this town, you bring him up, you know, we kind of center of. Most of the probably the daily traffic. Route. And so I think we've done well in terms of, you know, it's. In terms of everything, looking at the whole picture so far, you know, it's third going through project. Uh, phase one is just, uh, work, you know, and, uh, looking at coordinating the lines and stuff like that, so. That's a third that's gone, and this is, you know, what we've dealt with so far, which is.
Yeah, nothing really, it's fantastic, um, and. And I think in the Friday, I think this Friday, the excavator, I wonder what we discussed again, is that?
I actually spoke to the contract minister here, soon as I arrived, I don't know, but. Uh, she called Gavin, Gavin was going to go and see Wyatt's there. Uh, the only, uh, explanation for it being there is that there was an open excavation in the. That's, and that's my understanding.
It's pretty tight corner.
Yeah, yeah, but if they have an open hole and they need to span it with some solids and then. Nothing holds in, and that's what we do.
Okay, good, that's fantastic, good. Again, I think, thanks, you know, thanks to Sean and to yourself and so, yeah, quick response, fantastic. All right, come on back, uh, Mayor. Please the way to the naming of the Lockmaster Meadow subdivision streets. Um, if the clerk would recognize that, that you can hear this back to the table. Um, so we sent in. The names of the streets, they didn't get approved and they're back for new, is that the?
Uh, to be the most free, free, uh, two, three original commissions, uh, we're not subject by all the overseas. Due to, uh. Being too similar to other midtown in the area, uh, confusion, the laser responders. Want, uh. We we had that similar discussion at the level back in April, uh, but this was the plan to proceed. Uh, so we we went through with this, uh, there were many directions, um. But now we have established, uh, communication of our agencies, half a year, and so rejection, uh. The set of copies, uh, and propose multiple, uh, the options. That were provided to the various. Movement work with agents, um, to be provided, think, or half a dozen, uh, different treaties, uh. Um, it will narrow down, it would be, you know, preliminary, you should continue the lock of street. And then new additions of Alton Street and different lane. Uh, those, this whole line are. Liminaries supported through the agency, so if at this point in time, if that community is okay with it, they're. Give it my recommendation to endorse by revolution on sixty day review, all the areas. From Saturday to put it over another six year review. Unless someone publicly makes objection, we are ninety percent sure that they're. And then following six year.
It is a thing, but, um. Could something like this actually delay the opening of of the subdivision, or does it have any effect at all?
Through the chair, um, even with this second sixty day window, um, you know, we're close to having this.
Sure, let's say they were in a position that they. Could be digging and putting foundations in, is this something that has to be passed before they get to that point, or is it something that can be done after?
After the chair, do that after, that's practice to do a ten times, so that way the agency such as. Uh, about nine one, the challenge is there, are we are, they needed it, it's going there not yet. Uh, that is another, that would be, because the challenge goes through all the laws of. Uh, once the other streets are there, those develop. Take place and we go and we go to all associations. This is just the start of. Yeah, they don't even need temples or not to do this, it's just the. Working with developers to get the country that has out to give the agency their heads up. As well as, um, others, where we have streets that are in place and you might want to.
But it's, it's not a red tape slow things. Okay, all right, so we do have a recommendation here, it's pretty simple, the committee recommends a council endorsed by resolution. The naming of the three steep streets within the Lockmaster Meadow subdivision is Lockham Street, also the street, Conifer Lane. After the sixty day review comment period, opening for discussion, does anyone have any comments on me? Concerns with them. All right, seeing that I need a mover for the recommendation as it's written, uh, councillor Warren, seconded by councillor Smale. Any further discussion on the. Very enough, call the question, then, all in favor? There we go. All right, so requests to tender township employee benefits, is that one? I can see it.
So, uh, yeah, through the area, the purpose of this point is to, uh, tender the quality benefits contract for the township. And according to some staff, to ensure that some coverage is received for the best market price. Uh, the background, uh, the last change to benefit providers in twenty twenty. Uh, whether it's our, they've switched from family life, formerly great best site, sunlight, for current provider. W A A and then associates have been, uh, in a role early on. Uh, staff, uh, there's been several inquiries, we can make another company, just when our benefits. Uh, will be entered, now there has been some innovative ideas presented, staff for how benefits can be administered. Goal of the project is to include divisions in your staff, Todd. And finance side will provide that handle all benefits, if staff currently administers the I block benefit, for instance. And there may be an opportunity to centralize this process. Uh, the project will also take into consideration any items that come up from the survey. Completed this part of the health and wellness initiative. All certifications would be any. It's it would be over five thousand, so we would write it down. Uh, for financial considerations, uh, tender so maybe award to the current provider, so a more. In that scenario, uh, should the township adopt with a new provider, could potentially be time related. In, uh, claim to process and carry transition. Uh, while the intention of the tender is to reduce or maintain costs, there's always a chance that overall cost will increase, however. The cost should be also by patients. So, uh. Just to give a little bit more background of what some people have have presented to you. Staff is a model where there's a broker, but the broker is also the minister. Of of the plan, so. Uh, whoever is the actual insurer, um, would never really be a concern of us, we would be with the broker, the broker finds the. He would also administer the plan, so it takes that administration off of. Uh, of our staff, so. That would, it's, uh, the benefit changes from sunlight and whatever, where the. That's.
It's a nutshell.
That's in a nutshell, I mean, uh, just what we're looking for is is that approval to. Look at that, I would see, look at that. And, uh, stop.
Good, thank you, uh, treasure, so the recommendation is is pretty simple, it's that the committee recommends a council direct the treasurer to tender employee benefits to the township. And for Johnstown, or for the township and for Johnstown employees, and once the tender process is complete. Staff will report back then to, uh, council with formal recommendation. Uh, discussion on. On it, Deputy Mayor?
Uh, yes, um. When you say we're tendering it, are we tendering it? To different broker, like W A Pickman is a a broker at record now. So is that who we're we're tending for different brokers or we're tending to? For a different broker. And then the, and then that broker will go to. Whatever.
We have a third party's protest.
Right, of 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 different brokers, third credit brokers?
But make sure that providers and brokers. That we perceive several, um. Several, I guess, soft pitches from. From people, but, uh, we can't really proceed until we know what we're doing as far as as tender. Um, whether we can actually get. Balls in.
Right, so so we're, the recommendation is, we're gonna put this in the tender for brokers. Yeah, come on, boy. Good, yeah, very good, I'm happy with that, actually.
Um, anything further, anyone? So, let's forget, so the glasses, so we we don't have pay for glasses, we just administer as we're doing this up by the.
Yeah, we administer.
Also, we we do make this for people's classes, of course. Okay, that's, uh, that seems like a lot of work. I'm trying to look at any points from somebody else, but I don't, it's definitely slugging here for sure, so. Okay, okay, that's it, so we've got a recommendation, then, it's been read, uh, is there a mover for the recommendations to? By council Martell, second by council door, was any further discussion? Yes, absolutely.
You say we're we're tendering you to the. Holders, right? They go and see the insurance companies, correct? So the insurance companies. How are we gonna get better because they're all gonna be the same person? It's a church coming, they purchase to the broker, then they come back, right? Yeah, those are, what's, why do we need a different broker?
So. If there, there's, there's one broker. Gets the best price from, from, from the benefit providers, so there, you mentioned media, it's us and sunlight. Our current provider, um. If we were a different broker, that would actually minister five as well, so it wouldn't matter, we insurance, insurance, as we, we are contract. Cause there's, there's a cooling time on on the, the the other side of the of the broker. They can all get, uh, a better. Better, uh. That is for. Thank you.
Good, right, so moved in second, if there's no further discussion, I'll call the question. See no further discussion, call the question, all in favor? Okay, so township, town for lighting and, and Mr. Spencer, you can speak.
Yes, I will, I think we were. Little bit of background, this is, uh. For revitalization of the Gossam and the sports, it's a four step procedure, we have one step, which is baby. Um, light, uh, was step two, uh, the fencing, that will proceed. Uh, second week of September, and sometime in September, so, end of October, Monday, going, so. That'll be the four steps, so, um, this panel was, uh, submitted. Um, and we have to call, uh, two companies that did on it. We did have one company, six companies, actually, a ten to block, so, uh, in, that was all here. Uh, two companies are, uh, the ones that. They go on, I just heard. Uh, the C O and the. Then it's for that. We have two bids, they're below. A C F electric and four one electric. Uh, positive implications indicating over fifty thousand, uh, used to, uh. About two, five, uh, fifty, fifty seven. Financial consideration, scope of this project is within one hundred twenty one three budget, that would not for this project. The recommendation is that committee recommends that council includes the Johnstown transport rating. Uh, tender, you know. B C five, that's two, three, three, two, D C F electric. You know, forty eight thousand, one hundred ninety two dollars, three cents. But nine of the regula, we, but the visual ten percent for residency. For rent over fifty five thousand, be forty. I will just say one thing, so the panel is for installation of poles, lights, and that will go on, so the individual there. Will press the button and the lights will stay on for thirty, forty minutes, or thirty to forty five minutes. So the lights can't be left on, but someone using, just shut the light on, then we'll shut off.
Perfect, thank you. Uh, just kind of.
Thank you, Mr. Frank. Mike, when we're doing this. This is just. Question, is there any way, when we're putting the lights in for the task courts, we can put lights? For this, for the ball diamond two, on that same. Pole. And get ready, because those, 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 those are over forty years old.
Through the chair, to definitely, yeah, I know. You'll have in your twenty twenty four, you'll have a, you'll have a, get your, their, for replacement, Johnstown. For next year.
At the ball, right?
So, okay, yeah, they can't be.
You can't, okay.
There's only twenty four up on the dive, on the test.
No, I know, I'm just saying, maybe, okay. No, just a thought, thank you very much, well done. Let's get hold of it up.
Council Martell, which?
Uh, through the chair, to Mr. Spencer, I'm just curious, why, why was one quarter twice as much as the other, we broke it now?
Um, through the chair to, uh, council Martell, no, they weren't broken down, um, our consultant that we use, um, on this project. Um, this honor was that, uh, for one, I've just been extremely busy. Maybe submitted a bit that if they were maybe the only one or close by, that they may, uh, be successful in. Uh, I will say that, uh, A C F record, uh, is currently, they do some work for the township. With, uh, the street level, so it's, it is a, uh, a fairly rural, uh, business. We are, and the consultant that he does, but. With that, I need them on a number of projects, so. Thank you.
Good. Couple of questions actually, just triggered you as well, so, so they basically go by, press a button, the lights go on, forty five minutes, that's. That isn't, and at a certain point, is it? The button stopped working over the, can kids just walk along and press a button on my, I don't know, I'm saying, but, you know.
Well, it's like a ball hand, it's fast, you press the button, the one is fast, for a second, per hour, after the hour to shut off. So in fact, they get. So at the least, uh, the most it will stay on is, well, and it'll be up us, how long we want to set that up. We're probably gonna have, we can, thirty forty five minutes.
And this question, I guess, is probably from the treasurer, and I apologize, I didn't ask in advance, but, so with the fifty five, fifty six thousand, Tom. Um, and I guess we haven't seen it, we haven't seen the tender yet for the coding, I guess it is. Are we on track, bringing in a budget on this project? Right now? Perfect, okay, thank you.
No, if I may to, to, so then I'll be attentive for the. Um, defensive, uh, council, of all the coding, because it's some of the fifty thousand.
Uh, yeah, I think the questions, everybody jumped in.
Yeah. Council Ward asked one of the. There's a shut off time, anyone? Well, a lot of shows, I didn't, because honestly, I couldn't. Answers that, the question I had.
Yes. So. Um, I think my question is to, so obviously huge discrepancy in. Those specs for the tender were met, though, by the low bidder.
That is right, yes.
Yeah. And, and six, but four chose not to. To submit, or any, or just bros not.
No, and the reason, uh, through the chair, the reason that, uh, everyone kind of do a lot of say, it's funny, if you wasn't, if you had the back, it's like. What was it related to, where we selected, or a consultant? So that everybody would be, you know, start it.
So, good. No, it's good, and and my last question was budget as well, or well on the budget, is it all for, so that is. It's fantastic here, awesome, great work. Uh, okay, so there is a recommendation, and that is that committee recommends a council approved tennis sports lighting tender, B C R V C. Dash five dash point two twenty three to A F C electric in the amount of forty nine, eight hundred and ninety two dollars, ninety nine cents. Eight hundred and ninety two dollars, ninety nine cents, plus non-repeated H S T of eight hundred and seventy eight dollars and twelve cents. Plus an additional ten percent contingency of five thousand seventy seven dollars and eleven cents for a total of. Fifty five thousand, eight hundred and forty eight dollars and twenty two cents, any mover? Move, no, council board, seconded by. When the councillor Martel, uh further discussion if any. None, all in favor? Let the lights begin. We are on to. Item J. Which is firefighter honorary policy review and chief.
As as a meeting where I tried in May, uh in June, within hourly. Very insistent department. Um in the meeting, several members of the meeting that clear that they do not support that transition, so I have come out with. Is effectively the same uh the same policy, only the other change to.
Perfect, anything else that you wanted to present and achieve or? Okay, thank you, we've already beaten that one, I will open it up to the committee for questions, I have a couple of. The chief as well, but I'm gonna open it up to the committee first, so. I don't, uh so I appreciate achieving the uh. Uh the purity we've taken, you want on this one, you know, it's it's, I think the thing that's near and dear, minor and everything is, you know, we want to like to kind of firefighters. But we did make a commitment for a certain dollar value, and I just, I just, you know, I wasn't seeing how we could control that. You know, it's just because, you know, we want to avoid that we can try and try and do it, it's just missing that, so this this just opens that, so appreciate your efforts and. And and you have a system that I was like, so it's all I understand about it, really. Good. Uh, John?
You're really, I appreciate, I don't really care how you bring points up through. Different members. That there, but it's related to the same. Point system of the board, the council gives the next hundred dollars and the points you total within the year, the points you invite in, value figured with. Dollar value, I'm assuming that's. Way of working. That is correct. Question.
Good, thank you, deputy mayor.
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just to get a clarification, uh uh you like chair to to the chief. And our own system was one point. So how that went, perfect, so emergency. Fire, everybody got one point, or did the office, seems like you have one point five for the deputy now. One point three five for the fire protection office. Was that always in there, or was it just one point for everyone?
The previous uh was points were people across the board, but we had a separate uh, a separate honor in for officers that was uh. Was specified out. So instead, I didn't specify the amount for each officer on the top of the thousand. They will now earn more for the claim. The that that fire, they're basically being rewarded. Uh by their number of points or the value of the.
So deputy chief in those system was maxed out to three thousand. He won't be maxed over three thousand on this.
Through the chair to three thousand, it was off the top, where it was three thousand.
Oh, three thousand plus, it's not total.
That is, the those values play opposite, they are.
And we will be on this budget that we budget for one eighty five or whatever it is. That we pass for twenty twenty three budget.
Sorry, did you repeat that?
They, the the budget that we pass for 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 honorary policy, was what, a hundred and eighty five, and went from ninety to a hundred and eighty something? Is that right?
We don't know.
We don't know. Will we be on that budget for twenty twenty three in Austin? We're six months, seven months in, eight months in.
Uh through the general, the point space system, uh it is where they can't go.
We can't, sorry?
We can't go over the. One eighty nine five is.
Okay, we can't go over that. Makes me feel more, thank you.
Anyone else?
Just wanna recommend the thing of those to John, I'll just see this.
Yes, I think it's fair.
Everyone's good, okay, so so I think most of my my questions have been answered, um uh you know, I think council certainly respects, um. You know, the the need to make increases in that in that budget, and we. Sort of go back to the chair with the doubling of. Of that, and we've certainly had our our back and forth on this, and I want to commend the chief for for getting us uh to where we need to be with the point system, I don't think we ever. That in the budget, we recognize that there needs to be a greater compensation, I hope you heard the concerns and addressed them, and I think. Uh for what I can see from this, this will fall in line with budget that we asked for. And that. Those was, well, those that that serve will. Um hopefully, um get reimbursed a little differently than the other before. compensated a little bit more fairly, so. So thank you, we'll continue to work. Work, let's, let's that, so thank, thanks for for bringing it back yet again, so is there a recommendation? Is there a recommendation or?
Yes, there is a recommendation, uh committee recommends, we're dealing with the place, so. Honorable members and quality, ability, priority, to refer all of that.
Okay, good, so then I need to move for that. Moved by councillor Martel, seconded by councillor Smale, uh further discussion. There are nothing then, I will call the question, all in favor?
Thank you, chief.
Chief, finally, I'm policy. Well done. And all the, like, what's? Alright, I think we made it through. Uh, okay. Councillor requires most of all, does anybody have a word on this?
I have a couple of this, tonight, uh first of all, I might, I suspect of G P structure. By name, some information. On the.
Not a discussion of what are you asking?
I'm just asking for some information on this oil structure, okay? Close.
Sure. To the nurse, to the nurse, it's probably mine, I put a sheet for everyone today, um. Three five and seven, next Wednesday, the twenty third. That hire will be hosting a um. Ceremony down at the water. Hoping that was a possible, we hope that. Do you have a party ceremony? They might have, they might have their staff under there, and they're like, they have A S B, and some kids, and some. Giveaways and what happened as well, so. Um hoping that uh the council will be able to attend and uh. If the parents allow, it's a piece of stuff.
If I'm not, somebody.
Okay. Uh so that's next.
I'm aware of those. Free standing.
I think, I think I'm in London for emo, but I, but I am home. I'm off that day completely, and I, if if everything works out, and I don't end up in, stuck in traffic, I I should be home. I should be, sorry, but I am definitely in London in the morning, but I I think I'm home yet. So if you're not, I'll take it, okay, you can take my camping, I'm happy to stand on the side, um. Is, did you get all those?
I get, thank you very much, I have another one, okay, go ahead. Um I had the privilege of opening up the uh. Uh South Graham Bluegrass Festival on Friday. Um that committee is runs a very professional. Uh pieces of equipment, from the people that put up chairs and tables. The people who hired uh the entertainment. It's a well oil machine. We should be very, very proud, this committee should be very, very proud that we have some. Many inner township, year after year, comes back and asks us to put this on, because it is. Very, it's first time I was ever at Bluegrass Festival, I said to the wife, I'll be home at six thirty, I've got home at ten. Yeah, four eleven, because I don't talk in the chat, yeah, no, it's not that, they're just talking to people, unbelievable. Um I, that was Friday, it's back Sunday. I talked to one of the uh. Uh people who were, who was on the chair, and she said that they raised, as of Saturday. A hundred and forty nine thousand dollars in the front end territory for the food, um. Food. Gas, lodge, and so on. So just a, just a great organization, we're, they had two hundred and thirty five trailers in there, awesome, so it's up uh over a hundred. You can have it so much, so, and they want to thank. Our recreation for picking up and keeping everything so clean in time. Really good, we're out there. Right off the bat, the bathroom, we cleaned, uh people love the showers, good, so another. Feather you've had, Mr. Spencer, tell the rest of your crew, please, to pass it on, but a very, very good organization to deal with. So the Bluegrass Festival.
It's good, thank you, good, thank you, deputy mayor. Uh, earlier, I'm.
An inquiry, Mr. Mayor, through you, I'm not sure if I can answer tonight, if not, that's fine, I just had a resident. Send me a message, wondering if there's a taxi license available and card book.
That's a question, I don't know the answer to. Let's see if we can put the clerk on the spot. Can we license taxis in person?
Do you?
Or?
Um so. With the records, you can, I don't need his help. And we can discuss that, um it all depends on where they look for the. We need further details to show them here together.
Follow up if I may, so I'm safe to tell this resident, he has a commercial. Office in their property, so in place, yes, we'll sell that somebody.
Through the chair, everything is. Under our compliance, we're working by law, typically commercial uh. Commercial properties are. I didn't have a sign. In army, and I know I've been you know, this for here, that's right.
Yeah.
Um but if it's under. One, it's a holiday, it's really good, I know.
Yeah. That's good, um and fervent, you want? Alright, so no mayor's report, too much, everyone's pleasure. Um. No mayor, no mayor's report. Much to everyone's pleasure, I can say no one. It was a long days last week. It's okay, it's been holidays today, um alright, uh so question period, there is no gallery, girls are in the laptops. There is no closed segment tonight, so we need a motion for adjournment. Uh so they move it, please, moved by councillor Joe Martell, seconded by deputy mayor Stephen Dillabon. And I'm on the baking, I'll call the question all in favor. Hi, Barry. And then on there. As we, we would have to go back and talk.